Good evening. This is the September 14th, 2022 Village of American Planning Board Meeting. I am Cindy Goldstein, the Acting Chair. Our Chair Kathleen Sable is out of town on family business. Here with me is Seamus O'Rourke and Richard Littman, other members of the Planning Board, and Ellen Styler. The fifth member of the Planning Board is excused tonight as well. We've got Brittany O'Neil here. We've got Ashley Ly from AKRF on Zoom, along with our Land Use Council Teresa Bachner and John Kellard, our Consulting Engineer, and Alicia Moore also from AKRF. And I believe Dennis Drogen is here, Acting Building Inspector, if I have that title right. All right, so let's start. We've done attendance. And so the board is reviewing the minutes of July 27, 2022. Does anybody have any edits, suggestions, corrections?
I didn't. I was fine with it. There's one section that kind of says, you know, I changed to Section 7 to change to Section 8, but ultimately it made it into the resolution. So I was fine with the minutes.
Okay, Richard, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, so I have a little something on page three. Just before item B, the sentence that starts, "Mr. Kellard confirmed that he will review the construction activities on Mr. Stein's drawings." After Ms. Oakley has, it shouldn't be approved, it should be reviewed, the tree plant. Okay, so those were the only suggestions that I had. And if everybody agrees, do I have a motion to adopt the minutes of July 27 as amended?
So moved.
Second. Yeah, you guys are going to be doing it all tonight.
Yes, we'll take turns.
Okay, heavy lifting, heavy lifting. Okay, so on to the agenda. We have two applications under Site Plan Review that have been carried over from previous board meetings. The first is 535 East Boston Post Road. Is anybody here from?
They're on Zoom.
Okay, on Zoom. Hello, good evening.
Good evening, by the way, more to remember. Sorry about that.
No, sorry about this. These hybrid meetings are going to be a little tricky for a while.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Louis Vrano, Vrano Engineering, with the Engineer of Records for the Interior Fit Out at 535 East Boston Post Road. And we prepared the plans that are in front of you today. Based on our last meeting a month ago, it was the Planning Commission's request that we add two trees to the front of this property that's being converted from a bank to a physical therapy office. And based on the recommendations from La Bella, which they graciously gave us a list of acceptable trees for the property. The client chose the two which are shown on drawing now, which are the red buds. We've modified the plan to show the two plan, the two trees on those plants.
Okay, I think that was the major issue that was outstanding. Can I just confirm that the Westchester County Planning Board did get notification of the proposed action? That was something that I don't know who normally does that, if that's a village function or if that's the applicant's function.
The village usually takes care of that, and I believe they were noticed.
Okay.
We have the receipt of that.
Okay, great. And then just looking at the Terabella Land Design Memo, I think there was still a little bit of information missing, maybe more specifically about the particular trees, the red bud, maybe the size of it. Has any, Susan, maybe I can ask you to grab the microphone. I just want to make sure all of these details are kind of covered. Yeah, you have to. No.
Might have to click the button at the top.
So much easier when we have a dais.
Yes.
That should work, that should work.
So what was missing was the industry standard size for the Cerusus candidensis on the plant's bed.
Which is the red bud?
Yes, that's the only plant they're installing, two red buds that flank the front door. And on the, in the landscape, the landscape schedule right now, it's listed as small size under 30, which doesn't mean anything to me, nor will it mean anything to a nursery.
A nursery. Okay. So what typically would be the description that would mean something to express like?
Ornamental trees such as this, small ornamental trees such as this are usually listed by height, and I'm suggesting an eight to 10 foot tree. So if that could be added to the landscape schedule and then subsequently planted, that would create clarity across the board for all the entities involved.
And that's for each of those two trees would?
Each of those two trees I'm recommending are eight to 10.
Okay.
Which will immediately create a reasonable landscape.
It's going to go a long way to actually provide some shade and some attractiveness to the building. Yeah. So.
Kathy, if I can make a suggestion, it's Teresa.
Yeah.
I, what I, what I, what I can do, you have a resolution in front of you. And what I would do is add a condition number five, which would say, "Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the Plan A 1.0 shall be amended as set forth in the Terabella Memorandum dated September 14, 2022 attached here too." And that has these additional details that were missing from the plan. So I think in this instance, if you reference the memo, it's safer.
No.
I don't.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Seamus, go ahead.
I don't think the memo has the recommendation though for size that we just heard.
It does. It's, it is, the size of smaller ornamental trees such as these red buds is measured in height for this use and location. Eight to 10 foot tall trees are suggested for planting. So it's there in the second full paragraph.
Yep, I see that. Thanks.
And also the condition of planting, is this going to be a container plant, a burlap plant? It's just typical landscape schedules to include this. And I would say for this plant, it should be for a burlap, which is also known as B and B.
It doesn't seem like it would be too wordy to just have the resolution be very specific about those two things. Is it just height and burlaps that we are recommending?
Yes, but then there's also a note about number 11 in the plant notes, which is erroneous based on the site conditions, existing site conditions.
That was the other thing that I was wondering, if we've just referenced this whole memo, it would also incorporate that last paragraph of your September 14 memo?
Yes, yes, it would.
Which I think is important. Because from the photographs, it's kind of unsightly.
It contradicts what.
I know we don't usually do this, but, but the requirements here are pretty specific, and I think it would help us move forward.
I guess I'm more inclined to do it for something like this as opposed to something like stormwater, which is, you know, very much more intricate. And I mean, I think this memo lays it out that it could be, it could be enforced by somebody in the building department if it's not done according to the memo.
And there's also in there is, on the plan, they have the trees planted right up against the building, which is not good business practice. So I just specifically said move the plants to the, plant the trees in the center of that bed so that they are away from the building to avoid, you know, squirrels and rodents getting up onto the roof and insects. It's just good industry practice, keep plants away from the, you know, two feet away from the structure, like number 11 in the plant's notes dictates. It's a correct rule to follow. It's just not true in this case because the existing trees, the existing shrubs are right up against the structure all the way around. So it doesn't really apply.
Okay, so is this acceptable to the applicant? To basically make an additional condition in the Planning Board's resolution that would refer to Ms. Oakley's memo of September 14?
Yeah, absolutely. We've actually gone ahead and prepared a some, some changes to the plan to reflect Ms. La Bella's comments.
Okay, but I guess we haven't seen that, and I don't know that she has either. So if, you know, as long as everybody's on the same page and, and what's outlined in her memo is acceptable to you, I think we can move ahead unless there are other questions.
Minor comment that I don't feel strongly about. It seems like the easiest thing is to get this into the resolution rather than having two documents, a second one that has to be found. I would be fine with this being, do we ever do an exhibit or appendix to the resolution? Do we just copy this all in? Or I think it would even only take a few minutes to just extract the four sentences from this that we need. It's really just an administrative thing, but it seems like if we can get it into the resolution itself, there's no losing. It's just, yeah.
All right, so Teresa, how would you recommend we proceed with getting this language into the resolution so that it's easy for someone to follow?
Yeah, I do believe because it requires a lot of words to say these things that we really want to attach the memo to the resolution this time.
So it's like appendix, basically, it's?
Yep, yep. It would be, it would be attached here too as Exhibit A. All right.
All right.
So let me read this again. It would be new condition five. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the Plan A 1.0 shall be amended as set forth in the Terabella Memorandum dated September 14, 2022, attached here too as Exhibit A.
Okay, that makes sense. So if we're good on that, can I just make a comment on the three, four, five, the sixth whereas clause?
Sure.
Okay, so it's referring, referring to the Terabella Land Design Memo of July 22. Shouldn't we also mention September 8 and September 14?
Yep, yep. We can add that in, September 8 and September 14.
Even though those corrections have been made?
Yes, just a whereas.
Yeah, it's going through all of the materials that everybody's reviewed and produced, and it's a laundry list. So, all right, any other comments, thoughts? If, if not, do I have a motion for the resolution as amended?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
The next site plan review application is 1037 Orienta Avenue. If we have folks here for that.
Hi, Diane.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yep.
We can.
Good evening, everyone. Diane Eaton from Kellerian Architects. I'll start my video, sorry. And I think we are coming down to the last few items. I once again would like to just really thank everyone for their comments and all the effort that went into this review process. If it's okay, I'll share my screen.
Yes, should be able to.
Okay. I'm sorry, I see I'm glitching a little bit. Oh.
I have, I have the documents up too. I can share my screen. Do you, you want me to pull up one of the ones you sent in? Oh wait, I think it's working, it's working.
There it is. Diane, we can see the screen, so whenever you're ready. But Diane, we can't hear you. She's, Diane, you're muted, I think. No.
Dan Sherman is on. Dan wants to walk through.
I think she hit mute.
I think it looked like it said mute up above, but. Yeah.
Dan, do you, could you email Diane and let her know I can't hear her? I don't have.
Yeah, I don't know if she can hear us, but.
Sounds like she might be having some technical difficulties.
I can present the things we changed on that page, but let me see if I can.
She got kicked off? Yeah, that's usually better. I won't miss that part. I won't miss that part about Zoom meetings.
Should I just, can someone share that?
Sure.
I think she's on. Diane? She's connecting to audio.
I think you could certainly go ahead and, and she'll jump in when she gets back.
Well, I don't see the page. Should I find it in my own computer?
You know what she was going to share? Any chance? I have all of them.
Is it the revised land?
Brittany, do you have it shared up on your screen so he could just speak to it?
Yeah, which page are we talking about, though?
I think the landscape plan, and maybe to start with that. Steve Marsh and I went out right after the other meeting, and we measured, we were very interested in preserving the trees that were suggested by Susan. So we went out and measured all the canopies of the trees surrounding the property. And, and again, double check the canopies on the trees that we measured, one of the shows that were on our property. And we showed them on this plan. This is the actual canopies of all the trees and even the ones off the property. I'll get to the true removal plan in a minute because we weren't able to really sustain the full canopy in order to develop the site. There's a couple of conditions on the engineering plan where the drainage chambers fit in this upper corner, and the tests didn't prove that they really could work anywhere else. And there was a little grading needed, so we chop a bit into the, I thought she was calling me back, chopping a bit into the zone when we see that plant. And but we did move electric line trenching to not be in the way of the existing tree roots for the neighboring trees. And well, so we'll get to that when we look at the engineering plan. With my planting plan, I was able to review it and really get it down to 100% native plants. So I think it's, I think that it will still be lovely. It wasn't originally what I proposed, but it will be very nice. So let's go to the engineering plan, or that maybe, because that shows the actual limit of disturbance. This is the true removals. Okay, I think this will do. This is, this is it. So this is the not to disturb line. In the case of the far west, way over here, it's tight to the existing trees because that's the existing garage. So we're taking that garage down, but we couldn't really show the not disturbance line through the existing garage. But since the other meeting, we've decided to keep the one, two, so three trees that are in the back. There's a large spruce and a large pine. And they're quite lovely up above. They're very large. So we just, we, so we took them off the removal list. And so then as we look along here on the southeast corner of the property, the drainage chambers just need to be where they are. And we're going to, Steve Marsh, the builder, said that he can actually excavate just the hole needed for those. He doesn't need to over dig them. But we still showed that the disturbance line goes a little further because in order to get them at the elevation that the engineer proved worked, there's a grading of about six, eight, 10 inches of soil that will be added in that corner. So we didn't want to mislead it and say that it would not be disturbed, but it will not be disturbed by the machine. It says, we made a note, "Grading within or near the tree canopy shall be performed by hand with loose soil." And this was the plan that Susan commented on. I think that was acceptable. Also, in the front, this gigantic linden tree, the roots will be undisturbed for 200% of it, but I mean, 200 degrees around. But this last part needs to be where the trenching goes to the drainage, and some utilities come through, so we're going to have to disturb that. And on this north side, there's existing compacted driveway there. So we just count the disturbance lines right along the property line because presently there's a compacted driveway. And any of you that made it to the site would have seen that. So I don't know, has Diane come on? I don't know if she was going to make this.
I did. I hope people can hear me.
Okay.
Take over. Sorry about that. And thank you, Dan. I don't believe there are any other questions about the architectural aspect of this. And I kind of cut out a little bit. So Dan, did you kind of review Michael's stuff as well with the concrete wash?
No, I didn't do that. I talked about the drainage chambers. We went back three or four times with, with Michael's staff to really try and compress this and work it to not disturb it. And this, this is, is a good, it's a resolution. And so that's what I talked about, the utility, not the other thing.
Brittany, if you could scroll to Hudson's drawing C2. I think, I think it might be one more.
Yeah.
If you could zoom in on the site plan.
This is the 824 revision.
I don't know if this is C2.
Yeah, that is C2. I'm just looking. But this doesn't show the latest stormwater, so the latest, with the latest revisions, we had actually made, which include the concrete washout. I can put it up on screen if you'd like.
Michael, are you in Paris?
I wish. One of my favorite places.
I was there when Notre Dame was on fire.
Oh my gosh.
Really? We were, I was there two weeks before everything shut down for COVID, so. So right here is a concrete washout, and that's, I imagine that's up. So we have the concrete washout on this side of the driveway. We also provide the details in the northern stockpile was relocated to be outside of the tree drip lines back here. I believe those are the two remaining comments that we had.
What is the date of this plan, Michael?
We literally made those changes today, so based upon the comments that we had gotten from Keller's office.
Okay, but, so no, nobody from the village has actually reviewed these, these changes.
No, but I mean, the changes are so really diminutive. So I don't see that would hold up anything.
Well, hang, hang on just a second. Chairwoman, we put in a condition one that says, "Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall amend the plans to relocate the northern soil stockpile area to avoid storage within the drip line of any tree to remain, and shall provide on the sediment erosion control plan the location of the concrete washout." So it's covered in your approval, even though we haven't, we haven't yet really seen it on the plan.
So, so this condition would imply that just amending the plans to wherever the applicant wants to put these things, it implies that our consultants would agree with it or would work with the applicant until a mutually satisfactory location was found?
Well, we have John on the line. John, were these the locations that you had in mind, the ones they just showed you?
Yes, and I don't, I don't see any issue with the revisions that Mike has made today on this plan. I think they adequately address my comments.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, and since it wasn't submitted, I mean, leaving that, that condition in, not a problem. We're still going to work to make sure that they're all acceptable. So I don't see a reason to take the condition out.
Great. Neither do I. Because it sounds like we're all on the same page with this. So anybody have any questions, engineering questions or comments for Michael or John or anybody on that? I just wanted then confirm with Susan Oakley from Terabella that we're good. We appreciate the 100% native plants. It looks like the drip lines are all being protected and the neighbors' trees are being protected. That's obviously very important. But I think Susan had a comment, the tree protection should be more specific. Is it specific enough?
They have gone out of their way to measure the actual canopy of each tree, and they're protecting around that except where the cul-de-sacs are going. And in my little tree memo, I mentioned the best way they encounter, best way to handle it if they encounter tree roots. And they've marked up the plan with specific wording in that way, and that's why they're end digging around the cul-de-sacs at the exact size where we just learned to.
So otherwise, you're, everything's, I mean.
I'm comfortable.
Everything's good. Okay. Any, anybody have anything else that we need to look at here? Or we are in pretty good shape? If so, then the second page of the resolution, the fifth whereas clause, I think it should be tonight's meeting is the 14th, not the 13th?
Yep, let me find that. Let me.
Okay.
Second whereas clause, yeah.
The fifth where, well, it's my page two, next to the, next to the last where, the last whereas clause before.
Gotcha. I found it. I corrected it. Good.
Thank you. Thank you for testing me, actually. Is there another one? No, there's, there's another one. The third whereas clause talks about the September 13th. Do you want to make it three?
Gee, I hope not.
I hope not.
It's 14th at the top. That's all I can say.
Okay. That's all good. All right. Without further ado then, do I have a motion to, for this resolution as amended?
So moved.
Richard? Second, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Resolution is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see you in a few.
You always, Michael.
Silly question, who moved it and who seconded it? I didn't catch that.
Richard was the, was the motion, and Seamus was the second.
Okay.
Although they're interchangeable tonight. All right, so we are moving on to a new item. This is for preliminary site plan review where applicants have the opportunity to present their projects to the planning board and get feedback from members and consultants and guidance. And we just find it helps the whole process. So this is 412 Monroe Avenue. We have somebody in person. It's fantastic.
I'm not sure how you want me to set up for the.
Well, I will need you to use the microphone. I guess setting up. Brittany, what do you, what do you think?
I think they can be seen from that. Anthony, do you have a problem with it being over there? No, it can, okay.
No, it can, okay. You're awesome. I can pull up any documents online too and post it.
The marvels of technology.
All the moving parts.
So I'll just mention this, um, the applicant is seeking site plan approval to construct a retaining wall, fencing patio and planting area at a apartment building on Monroe. Sounds good.
Okay, good. Thanks. My name is Peter Catazone with Catazone Engineering. Uh, and we represent an applicant for our two properties for this patio expansion at 412 Monroe Avenue. Uh, the building is a, it's an apartment building, four stories. And the parking lot is adjacent to the building and, uh, to the west of the building. And there's a small gravel area. I would do that, uh, lower elevation in the parking lot to retain a wall at this level. So this much lower than the parking lot that they use for tables and just barbecues or whatever, it's residential space. And, uh, the, the, there's a demand, there's a lot of residents, there's not a lot of space. There is a demand to, um, enlarge that a little bit and, uh, you know, just come up with a more, uh, defined patio. Uh, so we, uh, they retained us and we looked at it. And the first thing we were interested in is minimizing the disturbance to trees. Uh, there is a pretty large mature, I think it's an oak in this corner. And, um, there's other trees, uh, this is a slope there. But there are other trees that we're doing our best to stay away from. We are, uh, eliminating one tree. Uh, the patio will have, uh, will be a sort of a brick paver type patio. It'll be, uh, curable, so it'll, it'll have sand joints, but it'll also have a drainage stone underneath. Um, there is a retaining wall which will wrap uh, mostly the south side um, of the patio. It's, it's basically on three sides, but it's, uh, on, on the west and east. It's, the wall's transitional, which, you know, it's getting shorter and shorter and either hitting another wall or, uh, just dying out. You know, we are keeping the wall at a certain height around this tree to act, um, as like a seating area or you can put a cup down on it or it won't be there in five, 18 inches or so, but just to have a, a defined, uh, tree well defined, uh, place, uh, where the tree is protected. Uh, we did receive comments from AKRF as well as the comments from uh, Keller Sessions and the comments regarding landscape. Uh, we feel that the landscaping comments are relatively minor. Um, and we, um, comments regarding the, uh, engineering are also relatively minor. Uh, we do have one question that we'd like to get clarification on from the AKR memo. And that is item two. Uh, so it seems like there's two terms that are being discussed kind of interchangeably. One is in the code and one is not. Uh, so it starts off by defining that the building coverage for this site is about 38%. And then, uh, which is exclusive of, it's only the building, doesn't include any of the existing walls or paths or anything. And then in the next part of that sentence, it eludes the fact that we will need a variance since we're expanding the building coverage. Now, we are not building any additional building. There's, uh, and they use lot coverage in that case. Lot coverage, I don't know, maybe I don't know the code as well as this board, but I, I didn't really find anything definitive on lot coverage. But lot coverage and building coverage in my mind are, you know, two completely different things. Especially when you look at the 38% building coverage, that's what we see up in Bedford Hills where they have five acre lots. And the lot coverage is 38, 40%, maybe lower than that. But in an area like in the Mariner House, where you have a lot of pavement, you know, a lot of commercial districts, it just doesn't even seem that the 30% is a legitimate number for lots of it. So I would just like to get some clarification on what we should be designing for. We're not building any additional building. We're already over that limit as an existing condition. So, um, you know, we just want to get some.
Okay, I, I too had questions when I was reading this, not because I know the code, but just because I want to understand, you know, what your pathway is through the boards and commissions in the village. And it looked like there was a question about whether or not you needed to go to the zoning board. So maybe Ashley or someone from AKRF could explain to all of us what is it?
So the table in its 342 attachment two of the zoning code, column 12, this maximum coverage, all buildings as a percentage of lot area for this district is 35%. Then if you go to the definition section of the code, 342 dash three, and you look into how it defines coverage, uh, this is the percentage of the lot area covered by the confined area of all buildings or structures on the lot. Parking garage, whose height is at least 50% below finished grade is exempt from this definition. And it goes on about more about parking. Uh, but then if you go to what a structure is defined as, scrolling down. A structure is anything constructed, erected or installed, the use of which requires location on or under the ground level and whole or in part or attachment to something having a location on or under the ground. So depending on its availability, the use herein of a structure shall include the term building. So one of the things that we observed is that the 38% uh, because a structure and building are used interchangeably in the code and it's, and a structure is included within the definition of coverage that the retaining walls should probably be counted towards the building coverage calculation. And so we were asking for some backup on what went into your definition of, of building coverage for that 30, 38%.
The thing that went into our calculation was the building area. We didn't count any existing or proposed retaining wall, but I guess we're, whether you call a wall a structure, I mean, you could call, you know, the paper is a structure, you could call the parking lot a structure. Uh, it's just a, a far stretch to, to get to that through the three different definitions that are right now. But there's nothing in the code that talks about lot coverage. There's only building coverage and, and to me, that's, you know, that's a, a significant um, issue here because, you know, there is no lot coverage. So the memo says, we need to understand your lot coverage. Well, if it's not defined in the code, then it really doesn't exist in the Village of America.
Welcome to our zoning code. Um, but I think before we, we go too far down this, we're not the ones who make the decision on this. This is a zoning board question. I believe Teresa, Ashley, is that, is that your opinion? We, we don't do zoning here.
No, you're, you're absolutely right, Cindy. And if there's a question about coverage, the zoning board of appeals can do one of two things. They can instruct us as to the appropriate interpretation or they can entertain a request for the area variance in the event the retaining wall is considered part of the lot coverage because that would be making it, uh, it would be a change, making it less conforming. Okay. So, so I don't, I don't think there's, from what I'm seeing here and from Ashley's very careful explanation, I don't see that this is a determination that the planning board can make. Um, and I would also note that the building inspector indicated that a zoning variance was necessary and he, he is the person who gets to make that decision.
Well, actually Teresa, you said something rather interesting. You said the zoning board can either instruct us or perhaps grant a variance. Is there?
Yeah, they can instruct us all as to the interpretation of zoning code. So if we're interpreting it or if really the building inspector may be interpreting it in a way in which the ZBA doesn't agree, they're the final stop on that, on that train.
So to get them involved, what's the quickest way for the applicant to move forward? Apply to them for an interpretation or for a variance or we ask for an interpretation?
Oh, oh, no, no. He should, he should just apply for an area variance. And if he doesn't need one, they'll tell him he doesn't need one.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, we were trying to get, you know, some clarification, so there's effort, there's client money that's involved in applying for a variance. Um, so, you know, we'd like to get an interpretation.
You, you're free to apply for an interpretation, but you, you'll still have to apply for it.
So, so there would still be a process. You'd fill out paperwork, you'd be, you'd go to a meeting, you'd.
Yep, that's correct.
I understand the process. I just, I guess my, my point, the underlying point is we're being held to a standard that's not defined in your code.
Sir, sir, we've been very careful to say here that that's outside the scope of the planning board and there's really nothing else to say.
Right. We understand that, but there's no lot coverage in the code, just for the record. Uh, it's not defined in the, the, um, the zone.
We're, we're very careful to stay in our lane here, so.
That's fine. We will, you know, proceed
What to do that?
With the, um, ZBA.
Okay.
Um, so this is a preliminary meeting. So what's the next step? Can this board, you know, uh, declare intent for lead agency or, you know, we, we, do we have to?
I, I believe according to our counsel and, and consultants, that this is a type two action under SECR. Am I, am I doing this right?
Yep, that's correct.
So there's no lead agency status required. So it would be a question of, um, this board voting to, to type, to type it. Uh, and then you go on your way to, I guess, ZBA. Could they go to architectural review at the same time?
No, we, but the good thing about the interpretation, if you do have to go for that, what a couple applicants have done recently is they apply for the interpretation and you can remain on the agenda and switch it over. If it's, if it is stated that you do need the variance and you want to go forward, you just keep it moving and move on to the variance. You don't have to start over.
Right.
So you can, it's kind of, you know, you're already headed that way.
Which, you know, we listen. So the comment about you might as well apply for the variance basically saves you a need.
You can start with the interpretation if you want to clarify, if you want to hear it from them. And that's how they decide it needs to be and you do need the variance. You're already at least a step in the right direction. You're already on the agenda and you've already applied. It's very similar interpretation, same application fee, all of that. So one and the same.
Sounds good.
All right. So I think we're at the, at the secret typing, um, part of this, uh, of, of this application. So, um, do I have a motion to classify this action as a type two under SECR?
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, I'll check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First step of the journey.
All right. I'm going to stay up there for the next one.
Okay.
Save you some steps.
All right. Um, so another preliminary site plan review. And it's back to the future with Mr. Noto.
Doesn't seem like that. Not much has changed.
We're, we're all a little older.
Nobody, no, nobody looks older except me. So it's so nice to be here with you, Paul Noto, at Dorpenelton for Tom Mudgeis, the applicant. A couple of things, the application, uh, is listed as the, for Tom Mudgeis, the property director owned in two LLCs, 960 Realty Buildings Company LLC owns 960, 950 Realty Company LLC owns 950. Uh, we of course can amend the application to reflect that, but I wanted to be clear. And as you're aware, this is an application for a parking lot. And we have received, uh, three memorandums, one from Keller, which Peter Catazone here can address at some point. Uh, one from HRF, one from Terabella, uh, two others. A couple of things that we think have already, what I have addressed that is that we are not removing any trees. Uh, so that comment about the location of the tree, we'll have to amend the site plan to reflect that. AKRF had suggested that we merge the lots into a single lot. We can do that and we'll do that. You can of course make it a condition of any, of your tools. Um, and then on, on the, there was a comment in number three that the parking lot, which is in lot of care, this here is 7.4 feet of Bradford Avenue. Um, Peter advised that that, that may not be accurate. He believes it's 10 feet. Uh, in which case we would not need a variance. If the site plan isn't clear, we'll certainly clarify that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Peter. We'll, I guess the only item, action item for you for this, I should be, uh, a SECR intent to clearly, okay? Uh, so Paul stole my thunder. He explained everything, uh, pretty accurately, clearly. Uh, yes, I think the AKRF memo, if I'm reading it correctly, uh, was referring to the area which is, uh, I'm going to call it south of the new parking lot. Um, but that is 10 feet from the property line to the gray shading.
You're, are you on SD201?
SD201.
Okay.
So thank you for, you know, I, I feel thankful that I'm doing this and I see the cursor move up there.
Yeah, but we don't get paper anymore. So we.
I guess not.
No.
And, uh, you know, this is 10 feet, if that's the parking spot that is in question. Um, we're gonna maybe pull the parking a little bit more, just modify the site plan just to stay a little bit further away from that tree to maximize the chances of its survival. Um, and the rest is, is pretty straightforward. Some, some minor revision to the curving. There's a lot of, um, uh, curving and sidewalk in this area, uh, which we will be removing and we're going to do a, you know, uniform width or approximately uniform width sidewalk around the building. Uh, there's parking spaces here that exist. We're just extending them. This would be an opportunity for trucks to, you know, enter in this direction and exit onto American Avenue. Uh, we've already done soil testing. Uh, it's probably the, the best soils that I've seen in, in Westchester County, uh, hands down. It's, uh, pure sand. Uh, so it's, it's ideal for concentration. And if there's any questions at this board that, you know, consultants have, we'll rapidly answer those. The, the engineer comments are minor. We'll deal with Keller on that.
Okay. Anybody on the planning board have any questions at this point before I go to consultants? I'm, I have one question dealing with, I know the last application was doing, um, pervious surfaces, right? Was, was that application dealing with, I thought it was with, with pervious pavers?
The patio?
Was the patio.
Yeah, it was the patio. And, and the thing with the patio, part of it's on a steep slope, which is not ideal. Any slope greater than 15% is not ideal for subsurface detention. In this case, um, you know, we have a flat area and beautiful soils. There's really no reason not to use conventional, uh, new construction.
I guess, but I know how the area floods. So just, if you have that good sand under there, may, maybe there are some parts where you could use pervious surfaces.
We can, we can look at, uh, you know, maybe, uh, provide an additional, additional dry well or something of that nature or, um, the issue is when you use pervious pavement for parking lots, it's not to say that it's impossible, but it's a different animal than a patio. Uh, this gets a lot of, uh, abuse from snow plowing, from, uh, heavy weight vehicles. If there is a hardware source, it will be, you know, larger trucks, not necessarily tractor trailers, but heavier trucks. Heavyweight vehicles, if there is a hardware source, it will be, you know, larger trucks, not necessarily tractor trailers, but heavier trucks. And, you know, that has an impact on the porous pavement, porous concrete or porous asphalt. And we just don't want to be in a position where we recommend something that's a lot more expensive than conventional asphalt. And it's short-lived, so we, we hear your comment about the flooding and we will. Provide more stormwater than necessary, but again, I, you know, my professional opinion is. Um, it's not the proper application for, for us, it was just. You know, um, passenger vehicles only, no truck access. You know, we, we may look at something, but that's.
Okay. Um, let's see, so. Let me go to AKRF for a second on the, so, so the, um. The question about the rear lot line and whether it's seven point four feet or. Um, ten feet, that will get worked out.
Well.
One way or the other?
There's, there's two points in that, in number three, so one is that it looked like it was seven point four feet, because that was what was dimensioned on the plan. Between Bradford Avenue and the parking lot. It may be larger than that, and that should be shown in the dimensions on the plan. Um, the other issue is, then that would be the, the front lot line. The other issue is the rear or the side. Lot line, uh, which is at the top of the page. Where you can see there's the parking lot that goes right up against the hedge. Uh, there appears to be very, very small, um. Buffer there, probably under five feet between the edge of the parking lot. And that lot line.
Yeah, okay, so there's a, there's a space.
You, you need the mic, sorry.
My whole opening speech, you missed it.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so there's a space that looks like it's up against. Side there, is that what you're referring to? Actually?
No, I'm, uh, no.
Share screen, Ashley, so.
Let me, let me share my screen.
Dueling here.
Sharing screens here, hold on a second. So this is the lot line here, correct, that follows the hedge line? Is your lot line? In which case your parking lot, right here. Is only about maybe five feet from that lot line.
But, but that's not a parking.
You'll, you'll need the microphone, Peter, I'm sorry.
This is not, this is a, this is a parking lot, this is where cars are entering to come and park.
The parking setback is for parking spaces, unless I'm misinterpreting the code. So.
It's a setback for parking lots.
If, if there's asphalt and you're driving on it as part of getting to the parking spaces, it is. It's part of the parking lot.
So, so Theresa, it's not just the parking spaces that constitute a lot, the entire surface. Including the way the entrance and exit from the parking lot.
Yes, ma'am.
The parking lot, okay.
Where lot has a double view.
Right, it's not just a lot, it's a, it's spaces plus passageways.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
We, we could look into that and determine how to. Eliminate. Okay, uh, well, I think we'll have to.
Okay, so that's on.
Objective is to avoid going to zoning work.
They're very friendly, you could go, and Peter's gonna be going anyway, so really, it doesn't matter.
I mean, what you might need to do is make this a narrow, make this aisle narrower, and maybe have some angled spaces instead, um. Just to make that a little larger.
Yes, of course, it's, yeah, it's always, it's always gonna be time, okay, so that will get worked out. Um.
So, but then, yeah, so that, so Ashley. Ashley has clarified in number three then, her comment, but yeah, the Bradford side, we will have to. amend the plan and reflect that it is the ten feet on that, uh, so it's not seven point four, and then in the rear side, we'll have to.
Yeah, somebody's gotta go out there and measure, measure that, and, uh, we, we check that.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Okay, um. And let me ask, uh, John Keller, is there any, I, I believe this was. So it looks like they have, uh, stormwater quality, stormwater quantity. Everything seemed to be pretty straightforward, John, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yes, it was a. I think it was a well-designed plan, uh, my, my comments. My comment regard to the soils is that you had very, very good soil, you had a grass surface in the back. But you used a high CN number for the existing condition. I think, I think it was an assumed D, D soil. Uh, which I, I don't think is appropriate for the, for the conditions out there. And I think you should probably look at adjusting that CN value.
Yeah, we'll, we'll gladly do that, we, uh, the first thing we do is a desktop, uh, you know, USGS. Um, evaluation of the soils, and it came up as urban land, which is usually a D. Uh, but we should have adjusted that model to your point, Mr. Keller, uh, to a lower CM for redevelopment.
Yeah, once I saw your deep hole results and percolation, uh, results. It's apparent, it's, it's faster than a day.
Yes.
I think we both agree.
Okay.
Correct?
We agree.
Great. Uh, then I think the other issue is with landscaping and a tree protection plan, um. Susan, do you have, we have to share the microphone, I'm sorry.
I'm happy to share. I just want to address what Mr. Noto mentioned, that there will not be any trees removed. If there's a comment right here in the plan, existing tree to be removed. Which would necessitate the need for a tree preservation plan, and it would. Force more trees to be planted as replacements for the tree that's being removed. I also want to address the, um, permeable pavement. Um, conversation that we were just discussing, if you look at page two of the memo, my September ninth memo. Um. We know that, uh, I tried very hard to get us, to change the streetscape to a greener one, and there are. A number of areas on the American Avenue side of this property. That could have larger plant beds, which we create where, um, permeable soil, which could contain trees. So I've suggested, I'll just point them out here, this could be. Because you're adding more, um. Parking spaces, this could be a larger area here with a tree, this could be just cordoned off, um. As a plant bed with a tree, and over here, an area adjacent to the building. So if those things are added, it would reduce the impermeable surfaces, it would green the American Avenue, it would add more trees.
Alright, well, I'm sorry, that's Tom Wouldyou, this is the owner of our property.
Go ahead, Tom.
There you go.
I always tell my clients to whatever Susan tells me to do, and if I'm over, we'll, we'll step exchange.
This is being recorded.
Three or four feet inside the parking lot, oops, over. Uh, thank you for that, uh, call apart today.
Uh, actually, Peter needs the microphone.
We are, uh, gonna try and save this tree, it was, we could shove the parking over to the east a slight bit and, uh. Save that tree, but, you know, we're still willing to.
It has a very wide interview.
I know, yeah, that's, okay, so I guess we'll.
We'll try our best.
Iteration. We made that change between the time we filed the plan and we got here tonight.
Okay, it, that's why we're doing a preliminary. Um, let's see, anybody have anything?
Yeah, so I have two small things, um. One, the EAF mapper notes yes for remediation sites. Um. What does that mean, does that mean there was?
That means there was, uh, uh. Some kind of spill.
Yep.
And that was remediated.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, I'll double check the mapper, uh, there's a gas station next door, you know? Uh, there's other gas stations in the area, uh.
And what's, so what's the process to make sure that whatever. Act, you know, construction activities on site, whether it's digging, you know, cul-de-sac, whatever, whatever being put in. Uh, doesn't disturb something that wasn't remediated, or just, I mean, that's a little bit different type of site when you're.
Right.
Had a spill, right?
Right, understandable, um, so a couple things. Uh, again, I'll double check the mapper, there's usually a, a spill of incident number. Um, with the remediation, I'm not sure if it's, uh, the gas station next door, another gas station, or another property, I, you don't wanna. You know, single out, um, uh, you know, any, any use, but, um. But that, those. You know, we'll verify where those are, but we are actually putting our deep excavation, which aren't really that deep, they're about four feet. For the stormwater management, um, to the west of the site. Where we don't have those heavy structural uses, during the test pit operations. There was no indication of, you know, I mean, we're in a site civil field, so if we're digging a hole and we smell oil, we smell product. That's a, that's a sign, actually, we would have, uh, an obligation to, you know, advise, um, that we found that. Uh, but we didn't see, again, we're not an environmental firm, and we're not, um, uh, you know, making any. Um, uh, statement as to, um, the technical aspects of it, but we didn't. We didn't observe any, you know, obvious, you know, uh, contamination or product, or anything of that nature, it was clean sand. Um.
But you, were you looking for, I know you didn't observe it, were you looking for it, and is there a reason in a remediation site to do a test, just where you're gonna dig for?
Is not a remediation site. The remediation mapper identifies sites that are within, uh.
Okay.
A certain radius from our site.
Okay.
So our site is not a remediation site, the use of our site and historic use, to my knowledge, has never been. Uh, you know, uh, uh, high, uh, risk, so the mapper is not necessarily our site. I, I think it's within a mile or. So there's, or a thousand feet.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of uses, you know, particularly re, to the, uh, to the north that are. You know, could have had spills, but it's not our site.
But I think it's a really good point that it would be important to identify where it is, what it was, and so your guys in the field are also prepared for. Whatever you might find.
Right, okay, yeah, I'm sure, um, you know, actually, Diana is, uh. Diana Gomez is one of our engineers, um, and she did the, uh, EAF with us, so I'm not sure if you remember.
Uh, no, we, we don't need to go into this now, you know, let's get the facts and.
But it's not our site, and we'll clarify that.
That's helpful, yeah, thanks, that, okay, and then my, the other. The other point, and maybe it's just preliminary for consideration, um, is, it might be helpful to hear from John Keller for me, um. But this is gonna go from point four eight to point six acres of impervious, in a place where there's gonna be water, so maybe even in. Layman's terms, there's a standard of what I think is retained and may be treated, but in flood scenarios where there's water passing over the site. Um, you know, what are the considerations for having all of this additional paved lot? Um, and then alongside, I'll just mention, you know, maybe a passing comment, but if it was in earnest, just, I think you said that you would go beyond what's required for stormwater, which would be great. And it would be helpful for me, um, maybe for the board, to quantify exactly what you have done, how have you gone further, you know, what additional has been done, because I think in a site like this, that's really helpful, so. But is that question articulate enough to just kind of understand what we should be thinking about as far as the water on, on this site in flood conditions, you know, um. Pre and post this proposed action?
I'm sorry, that was addressed to me.
Yeah, it's really, I, I know that it's, yeah.
Hard to see who you're looking at, or, um, no, the applicant prepared a stormwater plan, and he's, uh, he's mitigating any increase in, in, uh. Runoff from the, from the property. Uh, and he's addressing the water quality issues through three dry wells, he has very good deep soils. Uh, good percolation rate. And I do not believe the site is within the hundred-year flood plane.
Yeah, I don't think it is, that's, that's on the mapper as well, yeah.
Yeah, it's above the, uh.
So the, the trade-off.
Mayor elevation.
And the, the trade-off then, and I, I think, um, that would be the intention of what's required, but the trade-off of more paved surfaces is more than offset by the. Um, cul-de-sac and the stormwater, uh, management plan?
Uh, yes, yes, it's a, uh, it's a net decrease, I believe. Uh, however, we're gonna, uh, ask the engineer to modify the calculations based on the. Revisions to the CN values under the existing conditions, so it may require additional, um. Storage or infiltrators. Uh, which I believe he has plenty of room to, uh, if we needed an additional one, I think there's plenty of room to install an additional dry well on the property.
Okay, thanks.
And, and I tend to agree with him on the, on the porous pavement, I know we, we do tend to use porous pavement, uh, when we can. But I, I agree, it's. It's not as stable as, uh, you know, your normal pavement, since he has very good soils. Um, you know, a lot of times you use it when you have, uh. When you try to store the water directly beneath the, uh, the asphalt level, when you have shallow depth to groundwater or rock. Where you can put a deep structure in. But in this case, you have good soils that are deep. Um, I, I, I tend to, uh, prefer the dry well solution to a porous, uh. Uh, pavement solution. Um, just for functionality also, it's, you know, they, you tend to have to keep the pores clean, uh, so the water moves through it. Um, and it's just not as stable a, a pavement surface.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to, you know, express, I, I, I agree with the engineer for the applicant. In that respect.
I, I just want to add one more thing, Mr. Keller asked us to add the twenty-five year storm, we did model the one, ten, and one hundred year storm. So we just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, the drain acts to get the water in the dry wells, but it also acts as an overflow. If those dry wells fill up, um, so we always want to make sure that at that extreme flood, that extreme storm, not flood. That we have the capacity to accommodate that, so we'll gladly add the twenty-five year storm, but just, you know, to this board. That, you know, this system is designed for the hundred years, so when Mr. Keller says we have a decrease. You know, for all the storms, that includes the hundred year, we're not tapping out that twenty-five. So there's some excess, uh, there's some conservative, uh, thought in the design, you know, even before we. You know, tweak the models and.
Well, what I will need you to do is, is show me where the existing drainage system, how it discharges to the existing dry wells. And where the overflow discharge is occurring. Um. And also show the connections on, on your dry wells. And your drains and, and overflow, we, I have to understand that before we, we get too far down. Down the road, if you have that information, it wasn't on the plans, and it's part of my comments.
Yes. We'll gladly provide that.
And, and I'd just invite you to make it easy for non-engineers, if you've applied, if you, if you designed something more than a requirement, a table, bullets, like, here's the requirement, here's where we've gone, something quantified, that's great, because you can, you know, we can. Look and see, and so that's, that's helpful if you.
Yeah, that's.
Sort of describe it.
Fine, we'll, uh, in the annotated response, we'll, uh, just provide a table, this is pre-development, this is post-development. We'll write some, it'll be clear, it'll be.
Okay, great, then we actually have two things we need to do here, we need to make sure that Westchester County Planning is notified. Of this application because of its proximity to a county road, and again, who, who does that?
I was gonna ask the same question.
Our office, well, Ashley typed it for us.
Brittany and I'll take care of it.
Yeah, okay, just want to make sure, so, so that'll be, that'll go out soon, because that's what we should do, um, then what we need to do as a planning board is, um. Type this as an unlisted and coordinated action under SECR and declare intent to be lead agency.
That's correct.
Theresa, can we do that in one motion? Teresa, can we do that in one motion?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so, somebody want to make the motion to?
I will, so move.
I'll second.
Seamus second, all in favor?
Hi.
I. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Thanks. All right, and then the last application on the agenda, but we will not be done after this one. Is another, is a preliminary special permit review for three fifty Ward Avenue. So proposal to remove an existing roof slash attic. And construct a full second story on an existing single family residence. The tricky part is that the work is within the fifty foot buffer of the Mamaroneck River. So it requires a special permit from the planning board.
Michael, do you want Shay promoted too, or who else, just you?
Yes, please, if you could, I, I, I asked him to join in just in case there's some questions he can answer.
Is the homeowner gonna join as well, or just?
I'm not sure. To be honest.
You raised your hand.
Because this is a little complicated, you know, Michael, can you just kind of sort of describe, when, when we get to it, describe the site and. Take a look at. The project.
Whenever you're ready, I can go forward.
I think we're ready.
Okay, thank you. Michael Stein, President Hudson Engineering, we're the engineers of record for the project. What we're looking at here is in a second floor addition to an existing, uh, single family dwelling that's, that's on the property. Uh, there's actually two single family dwellings that are contained on the property, the property is located in the C two zoning district. Uh, which requires that any residential use of the property receives a special permit. Therefore, the, the, the main reason we're here. In, in this instance, there's, the only ground disturbance that's going to occur is for the stormwater management and mitigation that we're providing for the project. Basically, the, the second floor of the building is being removed and, or that's second story, the, uh, the roof of the existing building is being removed. And I, I knew second, a second story is being proposed to include bedrooms. That, that will basically sit right over the footprint of the existing, the existing footprint. So again, there is no increase, there is no foundations or puddings. But what we are doing, since there is no stormwater mitigation on site, we're, we're proposing to collect a runoff from this, from the parking area of the site. As well as roof leader drains from the building and directing that into the Villages Catch Basin, we have. Deep sumps on the catch basin, so we're, we're actually providing more, we're providing some measure of stormwater quality before it enters the village's system.
But you're not required to do stormwater quality, is that right?
Well, i- in essence, we're not disturbing the ground, except for the stormwater we're putting in. And we're not increasing the impervious area, we're not changing the impervious area of the site. So it's, wha- what we're doing is actually ju- is really more of an improvement to the drainage on the site. Uh, how it's, how the water's collected and by going through the, the, the deep sumps in the basins, we're providing water quality before it comes out.
But by code, you're not required to do the water quality, is that right?
Because we don't have the ground disturbance, correct?
Okay, that, that's just what I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what, what the law requires, and then you're doing something over and above, I gather.
Correct.
And right now, the water just flows into where?
Right into the Mamaroneck River, just overland, down through this area, or ultimately it'll drain out to the street and into the catch basin on the street.
What's the elevation, I can't?
Uh, the elevation within the property, so back here is around elevation twenty three, up to the driveway, which comes up to twenty five. At this point, there's a high point right underneath here, it's around twenty five point nine, which then dri- drains back out to the street. So for the most part, within the property, it drains through and then comes out between the garage and the, the existing building.
Just onto the street?
No, just, just on into the Mamaroneck River. So the majority of the site will come through, has, in the existing conditions, comes through the site and then. Right over in this area. Comes, drains through and into the river.
Okay, and now you're changing that water rather than going so directly into the river, it will be going into.
The catch basin first in the street, which then goes into the river.
Okay, so it's still getting to the river, it's just taking a different route?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, uh, the property, a, the portion of the property is located in the FEMA flood zone, however, that is right along this. Uh, the side here, the eastern side of the property, a- and it's basically the channel of the Mamaroneck River, it really, it, it stops right at the, the wall that. Is on the side of the property. So you can see the zone X line, the zone AE line, all within the channel of where the Mamaroneck River is. So while the, the flood zone is here, we're not, we have zero impact to it. Again, in part because we're building over the existing foundation and existing structure.
Okay. And is there some kind of storm, storm sewer connection permit that you need for this? Since you're, instead of flowing directly into the river off the property, you're gonna be diverting into the Village of Storm. System?
I, I'm sure it's gonna require DPW's street opening permit, more than that, I'm not, I'm not sure what else would be required. Other than Mr. Keller to sign off on it.
Okay, does anybody else, any, any of our consultants know if there's a. You need some kind of authorization or permit to, to discharge into the village system?
I believe it's just a Department of Public Works permit. Or connection to their catch basin and work within the village right away.
Okay, maybe we could just double check that. Cause I thought there was, I thought there was something, but I could be mistaken. Okay, does anybody else have?
That's correct, this is Dennis Strogan, that's all they have to do, go to DPW.
Okay, which is what anybody would have to do. Thank you, Dennis. And so the zoning variances, there seems to be maybe more than one. What, maybe Ashley, you could talk about. Your memo.
Sure, so, so it does require a number of variances and it all really comes down to the fact that in the C two zoning district. The residential, the, the special permit for residential use is really designed to accommodate new multifamily buildings. As opposed to the situation where you have a pre-existing non-conforming lot that has two single family residences. So they, they do need, in order to get the special permit. Multiple variances to meet the special permit criteria. Uh, for example, the code requires a minimum of five units, they're not proposing to increase the units. They also require the variance for the, the distance between the proposed addition and the Mamaroneck River. Because it's not a water dependent use.
Right, so even though the planning board grants the special permit, the zoning issues have to be dealt with prior to us doing that?
Correct, the planning board can't grant special permit or site plan approval for something that's not zoning compliant.
Okay, and, and really, the, the issue with the fifty feet within the river and not being a water dependent use. Is a contradiction in our code, which we've seen before. Yet no one seems to be doing anything about it, so. Okay, so. Susan, do you have any commentary besides your memo of September ninth talking about? Tree issues?
Besides my memo?
Maybe just, yes, please, sorry about that. We'll have the dais, the, the podium back before the next meeting, maybe.
There were pretty much two items, if you see the crosshatched area on the bottom, in the middle of the property. That is where a line of evergreen trees are, so I suggested that construction material storage area needs to be re-located. The trees aren't shown in this. I think this is Constance's plan, so. They line up along that bottom property, so that was one comment, the other one, if you, I don't know if you're familiar with it, I'll just show you mine.
It's, oh, you have it right in front of you, it's, it's a very, there's a tree there adjacent to where the construction will be.
And my concern is, you know, it's a very, it's clearly a volunteer tree. Growing out of the bottom, if you look at the.
Susan, thi- this is the tree you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, I, I brought it up so that everybody knows about it, there's a tree to the left also. But I don't believe that's on their property, so if they are raising the roof to add another story, will this tree be pruned? If it's pruned, there isn't much to it, they haven't said that they're going to remove it. I just brought it to the board's attention. You know, it's a sort of a unique situation, cause clearly they didn't plant it, or probably nobody did. Just disappeared and is very happy there.
It's a survivor, yeah.
Plenty of water, so it's to bring it up for a topic of discussion. No, eh?
We were planning on pruning it.
Pruning the branches that will.
Yeah, whatever's relevant with the roof going up.
And that's it, just pruning it, not taking it down?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Okay, um, I mean, it looks, I, I can't tell from the picture, but I would think another story on top of the house would. Would require that really to be severely pruned back, but. Let's make sure it's in the plans and, and maybe then.
If it makes it cleaner, we could just say that we're gonna take it down, just, just in case that is the case. Like you guys said, it is growing out of the side of the wall, it's not a. You know.
Well, I would assume it's not doing the wall any good either, however, I believe.
It's on their property, and if they propose to remove it, they would need a tree preservation plan and need to replace it with. Depending on the diameter, we'd need to replace it with X number of trees based on the schedule and the new tree.
Okay, does the applicant understand that, that removing the tree? Would, would trigger the preparation of a tree preservation plan, which would then have you plant small, you know. Wouldn't have to put in quite a tree that big, but there's a table that shows how many of whatever size tree you'd have to put elsewhere on the property. To compensate for the tree that's removed.
Uh, yeah, I mean, the, basically the entire property is blacktop, but, um, I would imagine we could figure something out.
Okay, I mean, there might be a better place to put trees that might be better for, for you guys as well for using the property. Not that we like to advocate to take down trees, but this one seems problematic on many levels.
This one is problematic, yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, that seems pretty straightforward. Is there anything else, planning board members, consultants, general experts? So I think all we're doing tonight is classifying this action as a type two under SECR.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I will motion. As we are typing in. Type two, right?
Type two, exactly.
I will second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
I. Uh, so the next stop, I guess, is zoning board?
Yes, they can go ahead to the zoning board of appeals to start pursuing these variances.
And do they go to BAR at the same time, or?
Harbor Coastal.
And they also need to go to Harbor Coastal.
Right. Alright, so.
I would recommend going to BAR, no, sorry, I would recommend holding on BAR until you've made it a little farther down the road through zoning. And Harbor Coastal. This, the planning board needs to hold a public hearing at some point, but I would recommend holding that after they come back from the zoning board.
Okay, but once we see if the plan has changed or evolved, or what, what, what zoning board is, so.
BAR won't accept an application, so they receive resolutions from the other boards.
Okay, then, there is a process here. I'm not always fully aware of it, but there is a process, so, all right, thank you very much. Um, so that ends the applications on our agenda tonight, so we have a few administrative actions.
Thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you, you too, Michael. So, um, the first is the continuing discussion of the village comprehensive plan. The village consult, planning consultant came and asked our, for our input. And I believe Ashley, your office prepared this draft, which we will forward on to the board of trustees after tonight's discussion.
Yes, so we received a number of comments from the planning board members and assembled them in this draft.
Okay. Right, anybody on the board have any thoughts, comments, additions, deletions?
None for me.
Well, I have a few, not many.
Cindy, bu- before you go ahead, I think you wanna release John, me and Susan?
Uh, yes, I think that would be fine. Teresa, the authority for the planning board chair to send a letter regarding procedures, we don't need you for that, right?
No, 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 you're, you're well within your rights to do that.
Thank you, we, we don't wanna overstep, so thank you to the consultants tonight, I appreciate the hybrid meeting efforts. And we'll be back here in two weeks. Thank you, so let me just run through these and we'll see if. So I guess on the second page, under chapter five, residential neighborhoods. We're talking about infrastructure in the first bullet, can we maybe also make a reference to the emergency response? I'm not sure infrastructure encompasses emergency responders. Okay. Little further down the page, it says recommendation section five dash three, encouraging less lawn and more pollinator gardens. Can we also talk about discouraging lawn applications, pesticides, herbicides, things like that?
I'm just trying to find that section.
Oh, sorry, uh, it's five dash three. It's like the, under the recommendation section.
Okay, so, uh, yep, why don't I share my screen, that way I can actually make these edits while we're doing this.
Okay. And if someone doesn't agree with me, please speak up.
Okay, so the, so we wanna add discourage.
Discouraging lawn applications such as pesticides, herbicides, what other sides could we discourage? Toxic. Herbicides. And other toxic. Materials. Substances, good. Okay, on page three, chapter six, land use and development. The third bullet, downtown is more just than a food-based area. Included discussion of existing land uses and business types, do we wanna also talk about including religious institutions? Cause that's. Becoming more prevalent. So I, I wouldn't call them businesses. And going down the same section to the eighth bullet that starts with regarding, the second sentence says, I believe, I, we probably should have we believe. Or maybe we cut that completely and just say, because as noted in the draft plan, something. We don't really have room for beliefs here. Um, okay, under chapter eight, the first bullet. Is that true? Traffic commission lost momentum? And do we want to say that?
I would, I I think it's true, I don't think you want to say it.
Yeah, I think it's true, we don't want to say it. Um, let's just delete that.
Okay.
I think they're back on track. And then chapter nine. Um. The first bullet.
What is root one problem with Harrison again?
So.
You know.
I don't know.
This is.
I'm not sure, actually.
A little bit of a chatty memo to start with, but that one is particularly. Yeah, I would, I would delete that if none of the three of us know what it is.
Yeah, okay. It may be, maybe it's one twenty seven, but what's the problem?
I I don't know, I don't, that came from a member, I'm.
Okay.
I'm not sure the contact.
Well, if the member's not here tonight to to stand up for what they want to do, it's gone. Um, chapter nine, environmental protection, um. Again, it's kind of a chatty sentence, flooding is occurring an ongoing reality, and most of us know. That rivers flood during storm events or overflow during storm events. Okay.
So I think it's most of us know that.
Okay, we know. That rivers.
Make the statement that rivers, rivers flow.
Right.
And rivers, yeah, just rivers.
Rivers overflow during storm events. Major minor.
Um, rivers and and the municipal sewers or drainage.
Well, at least goes out to the. Well, it talks about sewage in the next line, so. Um, second bullet, it talks about the WAC three, I thought we had a WAC four. But maybe that one doesn't include Mamaronek, but I thought WAC four did. So I don't, I just don't know if it's true. Old, it should be updated, whatever it is. Um, and then in chapter ten. Really, a swimming pool, the second, the second bullet, people want a swimming pool? There's one at the Ry Y, there's one at the Homic School.
I haven't heard anybody ask for this.
I think that's old, I don't know. I mean, it could investigate a swimming pool, obviously, but should it? I don't know, I take it out.
I I don't.
I I would take it out now.
Okay, that's it.
I think.
That's all I have. Thank you very much for compiling it, because that looked just like an enormously difficult task. And it was. So, um. We can all truly hope that this comp plan is just not left on the shelf, but. I think we know better. Okay, so the last item. And I have some notes from our chair about why this item is on the agenda, so. What is being suggested is that the planning board vote to authorize the chair, Kathy and Sabal, to send a letter to the village manager. Recommending that they retain Susan Oakley of Ta- of Terabella Land Design for post-construction review of landscape plans. Because right now, it seems that no one is reviewing. The projects from a landscape point of view when it's done, and you may recall several applications, when there have been issues. With landscape not being done according to plan.
Six twenty West Post Road.
In case there was any question, and it's not the only one, so. The point is, it's more and more important, but we have a tree law now that, you know, we're, we're asking. Applicants to abide by, most of them will, some of them won't. But they need, you know, they need to be held accountable, we've got climate change, and we're moving towards, you know, less lawn, more native plantings. And, you know, it makes sense that Susan be the one to do it, she's certified and she already knows the application, she knows the sites. And the best part is that it would be paid for by escrow. So this is not a burden to the taxpayer, this would be covered under. Under the normal escrow for applicants, and it doesn't seem like a big deal, she looks at the plan, she looks at the, it can't be an expensive undertaking. I think it makes sense to me, so it would just be a question of authorizing Kathy to write to the manager for this internal procedure.
I would make that motion.
Okay. You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, so she is authorized to to write a memo. She'll be thrilled, um, when she gets back. All right, uh, if there's nothing else tonight, I will thank everybody, um, stay well. Stay COVID free, and uh, we'll see you here in two weeks.
Two weeks.
So do I have a?
Motion to adjourn, yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.